Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 5:02. It is August 29th, 2022, and we welcome for a second time PEG TV recording this for us, and we thank them for doing that. First order of business is add or delete items to the agenda. So first off, on number five, under public comment, it is scheduled for 5:15. We know someone is coming around 5:30, so we'll make that change from 5:15 to 5:30 in number five, public comment. So I'll make a... Any other things you want to change? A motion to approve the agenda with the change of public comment, moving it to 5:30. We have a motion, and Val is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. The VLTC, Vermont League of Cities and Towns, is doing a presentation. And the presentation is via the U.S. Department of Transportation regarding the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. That is a Zoom meeting, September 8th at 1:00 p.m., and it is free. Our local hazard mitigation plan that we're working on is near completion. It's going to be going to the Planning Commission November 7th of 2022. Hopefully, we'll stay on schedule with that. Just following up on that, local hazard mitigation plan, September 13th is our next planning team meeting. We should wrap up our work by then. It is a process that we have to go through. It is a lengthy process. November 7th through the 28th, 2022 will be public comment meeting. We'll receive public comments. November 28th, 2022, we will be discussing the final draft at a select board meeting with an opportunity to share public comments. In early December, we will submit our plan to the VEM for approval pending adoption. And I think that's it for our announcements. Number four, administrative matters. We have our orders. I'll make a motion to approve orders for August 18th, 2022, in the amount of $19,488.43 and a payroll for August 9th, 2022, for in the amount of $10,469.97. And for August 20th, 2022, for $10,518.81.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have our minutes from August 8th, 2022. We had a chance to review these.
It's right there.
Yeah, we go back to August 8th.
And I apologize, I think attached to the email was the agenda for...
There was two agendas on there, but there was a previous email with the minutes. Yeah.
I did read these, but I can't sign off on them.
No, that's right. We will table this. Yep. I'm going to put these back in here, and we'll bring them back in the next meeting Okay, under business, since we're skipping over public comment for 20 more minutes, first on our agenda, under A is Ideal Vermont. Ideal Vermont, this is a training. It's available October 26th, 2022. Ideal Vermont stands for something, and so do its members. Ideal stands for inclusion, diversity, equity, action, and leadership. This initiative creates a coalition of Vermont municipalities dedicated to advancing racial and other forms of equity across the state through shared learning and tangible actions. It fosters coordination to multiply, amplify, and build synergy across the state. Mendon has been identified for this opportunity because it has demonstrated a willingness to confront and overcome inequity, including racial, ethnic inequity, through actions such as the adoption of the Declaration of Inclusion. And they are looking to see if we want to participate. They might have some more information on that. To meet that demand and continue moving Vermont forward, the state is launching a new initiative, again called Ideal Vermont, and we are writing to invite Mendon to consider its readiness to join the inaugural cohort. Ideal Vermont again stands for something, and so do its members. Ideal stands for inclusion, diversity, equity, action, and leadership. This initiative creates a coalition of Vermont municipalities... I don't want to read this again. ...dedicating to advancing racial and other forms of equity across the state through shared learning and tangible actions. The movement for justice is sweeping the globe. Natural disasters, justice reform, re-envisioning workplaces, student success in schools, place-making and community building, inequity intensifies all these challenges and creates heightened urgency for collaboration and unified action. Clearly, there is no time to lose. Local, state, federal, and community leaders across Vermont have worked hard in recent years to increase awareness and enact policy to make Vermont more equitable for all. In some parts of the state, these efforts have been met with resistance and even violence. In others, leaders and residents have stepped up in recognition of the myriad benefits and moral imperiveness of pursuing more equity. This is why we are going all in on Ideal Vermont. It holds the promise of unique collaboration across municipalities and continues to harness the transformative energy that is already building throughout the state. And the official launch date for Ideal Vermont is October 26th. On this day, we will hold a convening to bring the member municipalities together. At this convening, we will review the initiative's objectives, identify resources, and develop concrete action steps for municipalities to take. After that, municipalities will engage in regular in-person convenings throughout the year to share progress, troubleshoot issues, learn more about equity work, and offer mutual support. In addition to the regular convenings, municipalities will have access to a resource library to guide their work and technical assistance from relevant state agencies. Member municipalities will also be eligible to apply for small grants of up to $10,000 each year. I think that... Let's see what else is in here. All right, so I think they're basically asking us to join onto this. I'll make a motion to participate in Ideal Vermont.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put that over there. There's nothing to sign on this one at this point. We have information that was sent to us. No doubt has it. I'll come look on with you. This is for information only, asking if the select board has any questions on this. There's three basic proposals. One has a proposed right of way to another property. The select board has already looked at that and voted unanimously not to support that at this time. My feeling is giving up town land, even for a right of way, should go to the voters, as this project may eventually goes to the voters. There are two other proposals showing the building in two different locations and along with the parking lot in two different locations. So we have three, three different proposals. One has a right of way to another piece of property, Stony Meadow, and another one with a building in two different locations, and of course, that pushes the parking lot in two different locations. So Megan Smith, at this point, is asking if we have any further questions on this. I'm not sure at some point the Mendon Planning Commission can jump on, jump in on this, you know, as far as the picking the site would certainly be up to the committee. And they're going to have to, you know, get their A-game together to present it to the town voters at some point. I don't know when that'll be. You know, I think originally, the select board was asked for, just to support a concept of a community center so that they could get grant money from the state. We supported a concept of a community center, not a location, and they did get the grant money, so, to my knowledge. So I'm not sure, I mean, this is not something we're going to jump into as far as picking a site or even, you know, it's up to the committee to move forward this, put everything together, and keep the select board informed. At some point, they may want to be talking to the Mendon Planning Commission to get their potential input early on. And, you know, I'm not sure if we have any more questions for them. You know, basically, we're looking at, you know, different locations for the building, different parking lots. The right of way, you know, we already voted no on that, giving up that. But again, if that gets pushed by the committee, then it goes to the voters, along with the proposal, the full package of the proposal. What building they're going to build, design, cost, you know, there's going to be what fundraising, if there's going to be bonding for it, and maintenance, upkeep, the whole package. I don't really have any more questions for Megan, I believe. She's going to be at our next select board meeting.
It would be nice to go to the site and see it. I haven't been down there.
Okay.
To make sense out of the drawings.
All right, we can actually... I don't know. I'll talk to Sarah. Maybe actually when Megan comes, we can adjourn and go down there and take a look at it and walk it. I don't know if there's any more update on paving, if we got any more information from Bill on the paving issues, so. Just reading your email, if we don't hear anything, I'll take that on. Okay. But I'll stop in. I want some detail from you. Okay. Security at the town office. This was Ryan Sells' project. I don't know if there's any more information on this. There isn't. Okay, so we'll have to wait till he comes back, because I'm not... That's his project. And then, whoo, dig this out. Disorderly conduct ordinance. Brian presented to us, discussed and prepared a final draft for adoption on September 12th, This one was modeled after the town of Fairhaven. Kind of fitted and tweaked, so it fits in Mendon. So anyways, it's our point to go over the draft if we want to change anything on this, and then, so that it's ready for our next select board meeting on September 12th. Take a chance, just go over this. Oh, we have to, we have to, this part, wait a minute, yours is a little different. Oh, you flipped it over down here. This is something we probably should... Yeah, we should do so that it's ready for a final draft, and we can do it in between, but we'll get down to that part. Is that fair?
I thought it was reasonable.
Yeah.
Did you read it?
Town Amendment Vermont, disorderly conduct ordinance. Again, there's no adoptive or effective date because it's, after it's adopted by the select board, it's 60 days before it becomes an ordinance. Pursuant to 24 VSA 1971 and 24 VSA 229114, the select board of the town amendment Vermont hereby, hereby adopt the following ordinance to regulate public nuisance within the town amendment. Is that an S in adopt, or should be a S, adopt? Promotes? Hereby adopt. Well, no, adopt is fine. The ordinance is designated as a civil ordinance pursuant to 24 VSA 1971B. Article two, that was article one. Article two, purpose, it is the purpose of the ordinance to regulate the conduct of persons within the town of Mendon in order to promote public health, safety, and welfare throughout the town of Mendon. Article three, definition, as used in this ordinance, disorderly conduct is defined as one, a person who with intent to cause public inconvenience or annoyance or recklessly creates a risk to others by engaging in prohibited conduct. Article four, there, Rich. Hi. There's agendas right there for you. Yep, welcome.
Please, just see, it's not in the... It's okay.
Sure.
You're not blocking anybody?
All right. Article four, prohibitive conduct, it shall be unlawful to a, engage in fighting or in violent, tumultuous, or threatening behavior; b, make unreasonable noise; c, use abusive or obscene language in a public place; d, disturb any lawful assembly or meeting of persons without lawful authority; e, obstruct vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Article five, penalties, which we're going to have to decide. A person who violates provisions of this ordinance shall be fined. That's to be filled in. There's a civil penalty in Fairhaven's and also a waiver penalty. An issuing municipality official is authorized to recover a waiver fee in lieu of a civil penalty for any person who declines to contest a municipal complaint and pays the waiver fee within 20 days of issuance of the municipal violation complaint. The waiver penalty may double if not paid within 20 days of issuance of the municipal violation complaint. Failure to respond, this is number two, failure to respond to Vermont municipal complaint. Any Vermont municipal complaint ticket not answered within 20 days of issue by notifying the judicial bureau that you admit not contest or deny the allegations in the complaint shall be subject to a failure to answer fee as established by the judicial bureau. The additional fee may be added to the waiver penalty amount shown on the front of the complaint. Number three, penalties, fees, collection. Any Vermont municipal complaint not answered shall be subject to the penalties, fees, and collection methods as established by the Vermont Judicial Bureau. Article six, enforcement. Enforcement officials shall include any officer from the Rutland County Sheriff's Department and/or any properly certified town amendment constable who shall issue and pursue before the judicial bureau a municipal complaint for violation of this ordinance. Article seven, additional enforcement provisions. A law enforcement officer who does not personally witness the prohibited conduct may obtain from the complaint a written sworn statement giving specific details of the prohibited conduct and inform the complaint. They will be required to appear in court if violation is contested. Article eight, separability. If any section of this ordinance is held by a court of competent judition to be invalid, judicial to be valid, such findings shall not invalidate any other part of the ordinance. Article nine, amendments. This ordinance may be amended by a majority vote of the town amendment select board at any duly constituted meeting in accordance with 24 VSA Section 1972. Article 10, effective date. This ordinance shall become effective 60 days after its adoption by the town amendment select board unless a petition requesting voter approval is submitted with 45 days following adoption as provided by 24 VSA 1973. And then, has blanks for adoption day, town amendment select board.
Thank you.
So we're not, we're not voting on this tonight, of course. It's going to be taken up September 12th, 2022. What was left for us is the fines.
Hold on. We want to take this.
I dig out Fairhaven's.
Don't say anything that we should be in violation.
Excuse me. Well, that doesn't matter, right now, select board.
You didn't make all the thing when we walked in, like you did to him, you didn't ask him.
Again, I'm going to ask you to be quiet. What are you doing to me? Could you turn the camera on him?
Yes, please. Turn the cameras on. We got cameras on you, so we're all...
Again, again, I'm in charge here. There'll be a public comment period. So fines, you have any thought on that?
I don't, I'd like to research.
All right, so what we can do is, I might just try to... All right, just going to pull up the town of Fairhaven's, but that's just a guideline for us. I think I had it in here. Right here. So Fairhaven's goes all the way back to June 20th of 2010. Under their fines, a person who violates a provision of this ordinance shall be fined. Civil penalty is 200, and the waiver penalty is 100. And I don't know if that's changed since 2010. That's when this is dated. Probably is still their same ordinance that's on their website. Yeah, 2010.
Same offense?
Yeah.
He has to know this.
Yeah, I think...
We need to talk about it. You should read this.
So, all right, so what we're going to do is send it on an email to come up with And then, just send back your information, and it'll be ready for September 9th. Anything else on this meeting?
Pending legal review.
Pending legal review. Yeah, has not had legal review yet. Okay, so at the beginning of the meeting, we moved public comment to 5:30. We got 5:31, so we'll go to public comment. Well, you had public comment, or?
No.
Oh, no. I'd like to know.
Well, I was last in, so...
No, I was first.
All right, a couple of quick things. Do you have a timeline on the completion of the project on the town line road? I can't really see with the glare.
It's Rutland Town Project.
Oh, yeah, it's a joint project, Men and Rutland?
No.
Okay.
Um, they, the information they sent to us from start to finish was three to four weeks. It might be done in three, but they, they said plan on four.
I should be approaching that timeline now.
Uh, yeah, it was, pardon?
After the holiday.
Yeah, after the holiday weekend, I think it should be closed.
Thanks, yeah.
Just for the record. Mendon takes care of Town Line Road from Route Four to Gleason. That means culvert, paving, whatever needs done. Rutland Town handles Town Line Road from Gleason to Killington Avenue. So this particular culvert is there.
Especially I don't have to go down to Rutland City to get to my house.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
Have the recipients for ARPA funds been determined yet?
No, we're still waiting, I know you've got another one to hand to us. We're hoping to get two more to put in our full packet so we can look at everything. So far, our requests, you know, far exceed what we had for ARPA money. So we just got an email from Nancy, I'm glad you even said that. Nancy just sent us an email. She was receiving new information for ARPA funding, but she recommended that we get started on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the recent robberies in my neighborhood, and there were like at least three families that I'm aware of, they weren't break-ins. These people left their car doors open and that kind of thing. All of a sudden, my neighbors are concerned with police protection. Not in a negative way, they just wanna know what their expect, what the expectation, what you will do for the citizens of the community in terms of this protection. What can we expect?
Well, just to start with, we have the Rutland County Sheriff in Mendon thirty-two hours a week.
Okay.
Leamy Carter handles all that as, he's your neighbor, as far as, he does all the scheduling and he's really the one that to really approach on this, we don't micromanage that. He's kind of the point person on that one. And, and he's a constable, obviously. He's an elected official and he doesn't answer to the select board.
Oh, wow.
You know, he, he answers to the, directly to the residents of Mendon. And so at our last town meeting in March, we voted, the voters at that meeting voted to change that position to an appointed position, but that doesn't happen until another year and a half. So you know, as a courtesy, we, we could ask our constable to come in, but he doesn't have to, because he doesn't answer to us, so. But he answers directly to the residents.
So I didn't call and ask him?
Yeah, yeah, he handles it all, he schedules the sheriff's department as to where they're going to be. He handles all that.
And my last item is the East Ridge Dry Hydrant efficiency. It's my understanding that this will be the second consecutive year where the city of Rutland has not come out and test the efficiency of, of our two dry hydrants. Now, I had a recent conversation with Sarah. She claims that Bill Lovett has, they were out last year. And I just request, I wanna, I'm requesting a copy of their results. And the reason why I wanna do it is our lower pond, fire pond is, has been declared as a wetland. And there's another name for a wetland. That's a swamp. Okay, and it's, you know, it's putting the fire protection, firefighting capabilities under compromise that if they don't have a reliable source of water, they won't even attempt to, you know, hook up and pump water out of there. The other angle that I'm playing is that there might be some funds from the rural Vermont Dry Hydrant Protection Program. Troy Dare.
Yeah.
I've asked him to come out, take a look at it. He said if he had time, he would. So it's kind of, it's not getting any traction. Meanwhile, if you go there, the cactails and everything are just creeping right toward the pipe that goes into the pond where water is extracted. So that's my concern, the concern of my neighborhood.
The, we actually have some information for you that Sarah just gave me as far as testing, but I wanna get back to your, your lower pond, which you said is classified as a wetland or is getting, getting close to it, or?
It's classified now as a wetland.
It is classified as a wetland.
Which is a swamp. Last time we had it dredged out, it was year two thousand and six.
Two-thirts, okay. And then your upper pond, can you give me some information on that as far as?
You know, that's, you know, that receives all the collection of water, sediment, there are everything coming down the mountain. And that's, you know, you sad to say, about a week ago, a deer tried to cross that pond and got stuck. Someone spooked it out of there and apparently it was highlighted, legs broke. And they, we had the Vermont Fish and Wildlife Department come out and destroy the animal. You know, that just gives you an indication how filled up it is. During the day with sunlight, you can see that there's a minimal amount of water. And there's a dry hydrant there as well. So I'm trying to be proactive and, you know, see if there's any. You know, our, my association already has two beetle lungs that we're paying and, you know, for more than sixty percent of that population are elderly. And I, when I did a study, there's seventy-five residents and that represents fifteen percent of the total menopausal.
That's good information to give us. Fifteen percent, okay.
So, you know, even that, so any kind of distribution of anything, whether it's ARPA funds or, you know, dry hydrant funds or any other, you know, sources of grants or revenue, you know, we're always out there looking for some of it.
Yeah, I'm gonna see if I can find you this new information that just came. So we know East Ridge has two dry hydrants. And they own the ponds, they put in the hydrants, one at East Ridge Circle and one at the upper pond, at Pond Road.
Right.
They, meaning probably both, if filled with sediment, are looking for funding sources to dredge the pond. This is the lower pond, I guess.
Probably.
The rural Fire Protection Program with Troy Dare stated they don't pay for dredging unless it affects the failure of a hydrant. Is this information you sent us, you've been asking?
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Sounds like my.
It is, I'm sorry, and I'm trying to get you this new information, the East Ridge Dry Hydrant was at six hundred and fifty gallons per minute and the upper pond road or the Lindquist was at seven hundred and three gallons per minute. These flows, the chief Lovett called respectable, not great, but not failing. And then if you wanna compare those numbers to the South Mendon Dry Hydrant, that was at one thousand twenty-nine gallons per minute.
Mr. Chair, what was the date of that report?
Oh, okay, can I borrow this? Uh, let's see, this is a email that Sarah.
Is that an email sent to Sarah or is it a official city document?
No, no, this is a email that Sarah sent us, but there's an update that I don't think it's information that you have.
I have no information.
I believe it was Wednesday when Mr. Lovett called and told me that they were testing the dry hydrant and then we can see the results today.
See the results on that?
Okay, not, okay. So when was the dry hydrant, the lower dry hydrant tested where it pumped out six hundred gallons per minute? That sounds like a lot of water.
Last year.
Huh?
Last year.
The last week.
Last week.
So that's the most current, what about the year prior to? Because what I'm trying to show is that gradual decline and so they said they were gonna go out again this week?
No, they, they went out long.
Did they do it in year two thousand and twenty, Ron? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to get some information. And if you, you know, if you don't quite have it, then maybe you can get back to me on that, it's not.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get those updates, Sarah, I think I might have.
So how do you, how do you interpret Bill Lovett's comments? Not good, but it's not great. So where does that kind of stand within, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Okay.
Not good, but not great, it's okay.
Okay, so getting back to your upper pond, the Lindquist Pond, also known as the Upper East Ridge Pond, on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, this is from the chief Lovett, it produced seven hundred and two gallons per minute.
Is it the upper pond?
The Lindquist Pond, upper pond, seven hundred and two gallons per minute. And again, the date is August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. The East Ridge Acres, which is gonna be your lower pond, again, tested August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. It produced six hundred and fifty-six gallons per minute.
Okay, and that was on August twentieth, twenty-two?
Uh, August twenty-fourth, both of those.
Oh, okay.
It's a few days ago.
It was in time for my visit.
Yep. So the other part here regarding the East Ridge Circle and Lindquist Dry Hydrants, I don't know if you had this information, Rich, last year, no flow test results because their truck broke in June while testing Journeys and Culvert. And it took them until September to get the truck back and they did blow out, they did blow out the dry hydrants. I don't know if you have that information. So they didn't, I'll read it again. Last year, no flow test results because their truck broke in June while testing Journeys and Culvert. Took them until September to get the truck back. They did blow out the dry hydrants. So I guess we can say they weren't tested last year, but they did get blown out. And then the other tests are just a few days ago.
So how do I, how would you interpret Bill Lovett's comment? You know, they're not great, but good either.
Well.
I mean, what kind of answer is that?
Yeah, I don't know, that's.
I mean, what would you, what would you tell me as a citizen?
Yeah, you do have a comparison to the one on South Mendon Road at one thousand.
Yeah, but I'm not worried about.
No. Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I'm not. You know, I wouldn't wanna interpret his comments, you know, that'd be for him to say. That doesn't help you, you know, we don't handle dry hydrants directly. I mean, that goes under emergency management, again.
We pay, correct me if I'm wrong, we pay the city of Rutland six hundred thousand dollars, is it a year, to have access to fire protection?
Well, we pay.
What's that?
Sixty, we, we pay sixty thousand a year just to have a truck available.
Okay.
And then we pay seven hundred and fifty dollars per, per visit, whether it's somebody calling nine-one-one for a car crash or, you know, for a brush fire, that.
Sure, I get that.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we get any benefits from that sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Is that, is it a responsibility to monitor and test the efficiency of the dry hydrants?
Yeah, to stand ready, so to have access of millions and millions of dollars worth of ready, standing ready for.
Sure, I understand, that's okay, I'm not contesting. I don't wanna take it any more.
That's fine.
Do you know if there's any funding available from Dry Hydrant Program for a dry hydrant that is fair, but not excellent?
We can ask, we'd have to ask that to Troy Dare.
I'm sorry.
He is, you know.
That is such a crappy report from a city fire chief.
Yeah, I don't wanna interpret it because it says.
I know, I wanted an official document saying, and I would have liked to have one, as I said before, from last year, to get that comparison, but I can tell just by it being now an emerging swamp, you know, that kind of thing, that it's problematic. So any, anything you can do to help out the folks, and that's my.
No.
So normally Rutland City provides a report to the select board and not necessarily in writing, but it informs you when a dry hydrant has failed and it's no longer in use. He doesn't necessarily say, we don't know what the gauge of the, of the water flow is on whether, what number it needs to dip down under before they don't use it anymore for water. They have provided a report to the select board that the Journeys end Culvert has failed and is no longer in use. We have two other dry hydrants that are being rebuilt, so those must test it. But that, all the rest of the dry hydrants in town are functioning, that meaning they would hook onto it in order to draw water from it. It's not up to the town Mendon to provide that water. It's under the contract with Rutland City that they provide enough water to put out fires.
Right, I understand, do we have to wait for a dry hydrant to fail to have to do something about it?
No, we would want them to be at levels that we can draw water from. But they're, what they're telling us is that there's, there's only one hydrant in Mendon that is considered out of service with the other two being rebuilt this year. We have two being rebuilt this year. And then there's one that they just informed us based on that test on last week, that they consider out of service. The rest of them, they consider functioning, they would draw water on.
Not good, but not excellent.
Well, that's what he said to me personally. The report, the report tells you what the gallons per.
Do you have a copy of the report? That's what I asked from.
Which I just received today, so I will forward it to you.
Okay.
In the chart.
So that's one benchmark to analyze the efficiency of the dry hydrant. They didn't do it last year.
Right.
The hydrants was out of, the pump truck was out of commission from June to September.
Mm-hmm.
What happened to October and November?
There's no date of when they did the blowout. So obviously it was after September when they got their truck back.
Yeah, but I'm saying, well, there were four months after that.
Yeah.
They go out and test them then?
Yeah, good questions, but I mean, they're all for the fire department, really, to.
Well, do I have to be my own advocate for the fire department? I don't wanna.
No, we go through.
I mean, I've talked to Bill Lovett several times and said, yeah, Rich, we're gonna get to that, but it doesn't ever seem like they turned the corner and that's, that's problematic for me.
And I think.
I'm concerned with the hydrants up in the road too, because you never know when we have to tap in that or. My area responsibility is to my thirty-four homeowners, thirty-five homeowners. Anyway. Anyway, that's all I've got, um...
And Sarah, just emergency management, would that go back to, it falls under them, right, to...
Yeah, that's, uh, me.
I didn't contact him with the fire department.
Yeah, he, he, yeah, he's the one, their liaison with the fire department and that's his...
So I gotta negotiate with him?
Well, you started to discuss...
It's not negotiation, you, you have more information now than you had last week.
Right.
Because they went and tested that dry hydrant.
But, so is Leamy monitoring these things? Is he the person doing it?
Leamy is the interface between the town of Mendon and the Rowland City Fire Department.
But he doesn't monitor any of that?
I mean, does it monitor it? What is he gonna monitor? He'd have, he'd have to make sure that they're tested.
Well, making, making sure that the City of Rowland do what they say they're gonna do, kind of timely note, and provide the town of Mendon with some kind of report. That's not being done.
Now, this is the first report we've ever received from the Rowland City Fire Department.
And it sounds like, and I'm not saying this in a negative way, sir, it sounds like, because if I didn't call you, it probably wouldn't have happened.
Now, actually, he, from previous conversations that were had with you, he, I told you that he had it on the schedule.
Okay.
I just didn't know when it was gonna occur. It just happened to occur.
Like five days ago.
It happened to occur in August and you were scheduled for this meeting, but it's not like I called him and then he got out.
Well, I'm not trying to imply that, but it, it's just ironic that here it is five days later, and it's, you know, in time for, okay.
Earlier in the summer, he told me it was scheduled.
I'm, I'm done, um, I'd like to thank everybody for your time. There's something, you gotta really kind of close the gap together if it's, the town constable is under his job responsibilities to, you know, work with the City of Rowland and make sure that they pull through the things that they agree upon, then let's do that. But to tell me a pump house, a pump was broken four months and there's still a couple months remaining to go out and do it, originally pump, probably that has dry hydrants, they don't probably have them in the city.
No, they test all the hydrants in the city as well. So the, the end result here is that Rowland City is complying with their contracts to date in the city. And they tested all the dry hydrants.
I appreciate you and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Sarah, thanks for your, you know, efforts, I appreciate it.
Are you concerned about it yet?
I'm the HOA president, so...
Sarah, Journeys End, is that new information?
That is new information from Journeys End is that it's considered out of service. What he described was that the, um, the float that was floating down the end of the pipe had surfaced.
That's happened before.
And they haven't been able to drive. Coincidentally, uh, Troy Dare is gonna be in town tomorrow, so Bill is gonna have him go take a look at it. Um, I'm gonna, I just found that out today, so I'm gonna try to, um, get ahold of Ellen Pryor, is the property owner, tomorrow morning, to let her know that they're gonna try to, that that has failed and that they're gonna try to refloat it tomorrow.
Years ago, when I was on the select board, that same thing happened. I know they were doing maintenance on it and it, the pipe came up in the air and once it's up, it's...
Right, so they weren't able to drop, and they weren't able to, to do anything with it because it was floating to the surface, no problem.
So getting that repaired again, Troy Dare will, okay, take a look at that and see how they can, that's his specialty. And Woodford Road, no, he'll have maybe update on that too, dry hydrant.
Yeah, I'm working with Bill.
Okay.
I'd like to know what's going on with my neighbor's driveway, the Pascaroles. It's been over a month now, nothing's been going on, number one. And it's washed out again from yesterday.
It hasn't been rebuilt or...
Nothing. We, it's been over a month, I thought they had 14 days.
We sent a letter.
It wasn't here.
Yeah, I don't...
Violation, violation letter served by the sheriff.
Yeah, we have to hear from Bill Lovett on that.
That's just one of our neighbors.
It's been over a month, you talked about it at the meeting.
Yep.
At the same meeting, actually, you told me there was nothing you could do about the well on the property, but there wasn't...
Not on your property, it's on their property.
Somebody else's property, by my property. There wasn't ordinance in the town to take care of that, which, oh yeah, there was, Ask Al.
It's in the zoning.
It's in the zoning.
It's an ordinance or a zoning?
There's, there's ordinance on the well right there. The town of Mendon or the select board isn't, isn't, has no control over the town's zoning control.
But you told me you wouldn't and couldn't do anything about it at the meeting. You told me to, no, we can't help you, can't do anything. But there always was something you could do about it.
And was she violating it?
So there was a direction to duty.
Was she served? Did she accept the violation?
At the last meeting.
The town select board has nothing to do with it.
We have nothing to do with zoning. I, I can't...
What are you talking about?
We don't...
You're talking about making rules right now about disorderly conduct.
Yeah, about ordinances, you're talking about ordinances.
That's right, and this is...
Yeah, exactly, so this is an ordinance, a water ordinance, this is in the zoning regulations, and you're telling me that you're not gonna do anything about my neighbor flooding my property?
She said she violated, did she violate it?
Did she get violated? Did she accept the certified mail? Did she get served by the sheriff?
Carol, yeah, did she get served by the sheriff like I did? How come I'm the only one getting served by the sheriff for violation?
It's, again, it's zoning, you're talking to the wrong people.
No, you guys made an ordinance with Dick Wilcox at a meeting saying that any violations were gonna be served by the sheriff.
Right, Sheriff?
And I was the only, hold on, I was the only one.
Yep, yeah, I have, I have that meeting.
I was the only one that ever had, uh...
The sheriff.
The sheriff and a constable come armed, giving me a hard time about some...
To our home.
About some...
Solar light.
Some solar motion detector lights.
Okay, and that's from zoning, not the select board's ballot. Oh, you got the floor.
Can we just talk about one?
Okay, one thing at a time. What's up with my neighbor's driveway?
Well, can we go to the water for a moment? The zoning administrator went and looked at the well water with you?
Yep, she's actually gonna violate it.
Okay, step one, step one.
Yep.
And I haven't, I don't know anything else about that.
Well, how about the Pascaroles driveway? That was a month ago.
And they don't...
You said you had 14 days to take care of it.
I can't answer the question if you're gonna keep talking.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so what happened with...
Answer it.
So we sent an email to them. They don't live here permanently.
Doesn't matter, they shouldn't have any special...
Because they're not, no, that doesn't mean they should get special care.
Special treatment?
There's no special...
It sounds like it, because you, Bill was gonna call, Bill said he was gonna call them. Nobody ever called me for anything, they just violated me. I didn't get any courtesy calls.
We're talking about the driveway.
Exactly.
We don't, we don't have to move backwards.
Well, why are we giving people courtesy calls when you violated them?
We're moving one step at a time, Brian. We emailed them.
They have 14 days.
I want to know what their response was. They formally received a letter of violation from the town of Mendon saying that they had to get an access permit in order to rectify the situation. The select board does not have the status of that violation at this time because Bill Ellis, the road commissioner, is not present at this meeting. And that the select board will follow up on that first thing tomorrow morning to determine what the status of that violation is.
Okay.
But there are rules, right? So they get violated, they get fined a certain amount of day, and then they have to pay that to the town, correct?
So it is, the access permit is outlined in the Town of Mendon Highway specifications and the remedies and penalties that are outlined in that ordinance, which the town of, the, the select board does have control over.
I asked to find the permit.
The select board does not have control over zoning violations or the zoning ordinance.
I don't think there was ever a permit for that driveway, from my understanding. That's what I asked you to find out from me a couple weeks ago.
To find the provisional permit.
Who gave the permit to build that driveway in the first place? Shouldn't be a driveway then.
Oh, that's gotta be years and years ago when they built it.
That's what I asked, I asked them again.
When Bill Ellis wasn't here, that they built the driveway. So within those four years, you can look for that permit within those four years.
Should've been easy, I asked a couple weeks ago, can I see who issued the permit and when it was?
That's your little buddy.
But I didn't get that either.
So the Town of Mendon access permits are also filed with the zoning permit, in the zoning file. If in the 90s there was not a file for zoning, we don't, if there wasn't access permit issued, it would be in the zoning file.
And so can we work for that tomorrow, so I can see if...
Our public record and can we request from the counselor?
Yeah, we, we request a lot of things from the public record of Mendon, and we never get them. So can we move on to the water? The water issue from 48, is it 48 Turm Lane? There's flooding on, there's flooding on my property or a lot.
Yeah, you said you couldn't do nothing about, but there really was something you could do something about?
You all went there and you all saw the water flowing from that area.
Carol was there, Bill was there.
Right onto our property.
I have many of you guys pointing at it, here's the well, that's where it's coming from, flooding my property.
We just said...
It's coming out the pipe still right now.
Right now. Hundredly gallons of water.
We'll follow up with the zoning administrator.
Flooding my property, but nobody wants to stop.
She was supposed to get violated, she was supposed to get fined within seven days.
That was, that was over two weeks ago.
A sheriff was supposed to serve her for the violation.
Okay, anything new? We will follow up with the zoning administrator tomorrow. We don't need to just keep doing this hamster wheel. Are we done?
Oh my God, we went on to the same thing for an hour. No, we said anything. All of a sudden you don't want to talk.
Excuse me, I'm talking now. We have a...
I'm talking right now.
No, no, you're not, I'm talking, I'll call you out of order.
I'm not out of order.
You're out of, I'm calling you because I'm talking now, I'm taking the floor.
Okay, you can take the floor and I'll take it right now.
All right. You have, you have an issue and a complaint with zoning. This is the select board, we do not handle zoning. You're talking to the wrong people.
Then why are you all going over there and helping her with the other zoning issues? I don't understand.
You helped her with the solar panel issue, that was a zoning issue. Why did the sheriff come over to our house about a solar light that we had on our property?
Actually, two offices, you sent two officers to my house.
Two officers to my house.
I don't know anything about zoning.
With mass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about solar panels, I wasn't there.
I was the only one in town to ever have the sheriffs come for, with a zoning violation.
Of, of, unzoning violation.
I don't know why that was, when you said it.
The constable, the constable and the sheriff come more house.
Then you need to speak to zoning. I can't answer for our zoning administrator. We don't micromanage the zoning administrator. If you have a zoning issue, you need to go and talk to the zoning administrator.
I asked at the meeting, if there was something that the town could do. You all said there was nothing you could do, but yet there was something that the town could do through the zoning administrator.
No, all right, that's enough, I've got enough.
You couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't help me that for us.
Out of order?
I'm not out of order.
I'm gonna ask you, sir.
Let's go. Let's go.
Please, I'm not out of order.
You never wanted anything for us. You did everything for her, you did nothing for us.
Okay, thank you.
And she's been ruining our property.
You wanna go for this worldly comment?
Yeah, I do, oh yeah, just like she's...
Please, now, it can be, hey, please, you're just over this one.
They never help us out. I'm talking, I'm talking. It's public, can we, can we disprove?
I'll follow up with Susannah. Yeah, I didn't talk to her.
Again, it's, it's not our call. We, I don't wanna micromanage, we don't micromanage zoning.
Uh, both of the issues they're complaining about was the zoning issue and not under the privy of the Town of Mendon Select Board, uh, and the dry, or the access permit for the, for their driveway, I'll follow up with Bill Ellis tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is not the first time. Yeah, okay, um, again, the, for the record, the select board has never issued any violations of anything, anything they have received is from zoning, and we do not handle zoning. All right, and Val said she would follow up with, with zoning administrator to see where that status on that one is. All right, uh, last on our agenda, um, I don't, I think, again, this is being handled by Brian Sell, legal counsel advisement on disorderly conduct. Again, we need a review of the disorderly conduct ordinance and, um, that review is pending before, hopefully we'll have an answer, and a review from legal counsel before the September 9th meeting, so we can move forward on that. Um, at the meantime, uh, the three of us will come up with the fines, what we thought the fines should be, and come to a consensus on that. Um, and then continue on that legal counsel advisement on disorderly conduct and harassment of town employees and town officials, that's still pending legal review. Okay. All right, anything else? We're good?
We're good.
Okay. Uh, I'll make motion to adjourn at five, or 6:08?
Second, Tom.
You have a second? All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.